Thank you for joining us this evening, the regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council, May 23rd, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Aldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
George Capps.
Here.
Jill Pumphrey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
A quorum is present, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Tonight Pastor Steve Walter is going to lead us into invocation and Councilman Gary Aldrich is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Heavenly Father, I love you. I thank you for life that you've given us, Lord Jesus. As I look around this room, Father, I see lives that have come to represent people, Father of this city. Lord Jesus, I pray that you would move in the hearts of the men and the women that are here today. The men and women that you have placed to give leadership to this city. Father, I pray that all decisions made here, Lord, be these decisions that would be made to glorify your name according to your will. That they would bring a city together, united, Father, to walk with you, to glorify you. Lord Jesus, we thank you for life, life that you have given us. And as we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
George, can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
George, can we make that motion to remove item D from the agenda?
With a motion to remove item D?
Okay. And is there a second? Gary?
I'll second it.
Okay. We got a motion and a second for approval of the agenda with removing item D under new business. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero. Tonight, we don't have anything for awards or presentations. Nobody has signed up to speak at public forum. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our staff reports and we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Witton. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Worked on a lot of different things, a lot of which is on the agenda, so I won't go over them tonight with you until it comes up on the agenda itself. We closed on another lot in Bear Hill. The one I thought we closed on last week got extended a little bit, but hopefully this Friday we'll get it closed likewise. So Bear Hill is moving ahead. They started the water and sewer lines in Saddle Brook. First part of June, we'll be bidding Village Estates water and sewer. And so we'll be getting that one going. The new administrative center. We're hoping to get in there in the first part of June if everything works out right. We're still having trouble in communication and making sure things that we thought were being installed are or are not. And so we worked out a few of those bugs today at our construction meeting. Hopefully, we got that settled. So I'm open for any questions you might may have.
Just have a lot of loose ends to tie up.
Oh, yeah.
George?
Are we going to have an open house for the public before or after we move in there?
My goal is that after we move in, we'll have an open house. The chief and I have kind of discussed some things and we'll be putting things in place so that we can have a full open house and invite everybody to come see the new facility.
Well, I figure. I figure it's their house, they're going to want to see it.
Absolutely, and I definitely want to make sure that we were able to give everybody the opportunity to come and visit the new facility.
So our goal right now is to start placing furniture in the second week of June. If the building is complete by then. So that's kind of our goal and also trying to get our internet and all our computer stuff installed by then, too. And we're going to have to do it in stages, obviously. May end up doing some of it over a weekend or something. But we don't want any disruption to the public if we can avoid it.
All right. Thank you, Jack. Now, seeing any further questions for Jack? So we'll move on to Rick Norman, our Director of Public Works. Rick?
Mr. Mayor? Public Works report for this evening, May 23rd, 2017. In our park department, we've been busy mowing and trimming in parks and facilities. Back when we had the brush in Limb Day back in April, we had three or four cubic yards of mulch. We did get that removed from the west end of McLean Park. Also, we've been working on the fishing dock on Grow Point Lake. We've had some erosion issues, so we put some big rock around the dock, hoping that will help with that. We've also had that sprayed twice last several weeks, May 9th, and also today. Trying to get that in tip-top shape for next month's fishing derby. The street department, been mowing and trimming on the medians and some on our arterials. We also had the street sweeper out on some of our arterials. We done the best we could on Tuesday drive with the sweeper, with the construction in place down there. The new Harley-Davidson distributor, Twister City, had their opening last weekend, so we tried to get everything cleaned up as good as we could for that. Water and sewer department. One more item on the street department. May 17th, we did set up the traffic counters on the west end of the 61st Street Bridge. The initial 24-hour count on that was about 12,000. We'll have further numbers later on on that. In the water and sewer department, average work orders per day from May 1st to the 15th was 29. We did accept delivery on our half-ton truck for the water department. We have that in. We haven't got it in the fleet yet. We're still putting a light on it and radio and then we'll do an undercoating, so we're expecting to do that very shortly. Also, on May 12th, in regards to the boil order advisory, the water plant had a chlorinator that went out on the 12th. They notified us and KDHE, Kansas Department of Health and Environment. At that time, as soon as we were notified, went to Wichita, City of Wichita Water Supply. At that time, that's when KDHE put out the boil order advisory on that. We done a lot of testing that day, all of our tests. We were in a safe chlorine range. We did pull eight samples, which is a requirement through KDHE, took them down to the lab. They tested negative. We got those results back the following day, May 13th, and notified KDHE. And at that time, they rescinded the boil order. So it went as good as it could. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I appreciate your efforts, Rick, on the boiling water thing. I saw a lot of comments on Facebook about how fast the city responded and letting the actual residents know about what's going on here. So I appreciate the fact that you guys were able to do that, let our citizens know. Also, the fishing derby, I appreciate the efforts that your staff on the park. The park looks great. The pond, it looks great. We have a lot of people fishing it daily now, but also the handicap dock and the efforts that you guys put. But also addressing the rock situation, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Jim?
Hey, just a fast question on the chlorinator issue. When that failed, do we not have a backup system? How did? I'm trying to picture what happened there physically.
Well, really, that comes back to the CCU.
Sure. I just thought we knew.
I don't know for sure. I can tell you that they add chlorine and ammonia. At some point, the chlorinator went out. I don't know the specifics on that. We moved as quickly as we could on it. Like I said, we had, we have to be above 1.0 on a chlorine residual. And we were, most of our tests averaged about 1.9, so we were in a very safe operating range on that. But I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, I mean, the CCU is meeting on Thursday at the library. And the supervisor of the CCU will be there if anybody wanted to come to a public forum and talk to that. But Randall is the operator of the CCU and he'd be the one best suited to answer that question. Fair enough.
I got asked that.
You can.
Okay. Our backup, the City of Wichita. Unfortunately, by the time CCU discovered it, that 12 hours had already passed. Had it went out and we were notified immediately, we could switch Wichita, would not have had a problem. But there was a 12-hour lag there and that's what put us in the situation we had. But we do have a backup, City of Wichita.
Okay, I got asked that question, so I thought it'd be good.
And actually, we just need to be more accurate on that because there really wasn't a 12-hour lag. It was from that 2:00 in the morning until 7:30 in the morning when that was found. So that's why, really, that Randall and we could ask him to come to the council meeting and give him the opportunity to speak on that if we wanted to.
I was given wrong information. I was told it was 12 hours.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I think that's good enough for what I needed.
But we do have a backup, yes.
Go ahead, Tom.
I'd like to make a comment about that. It happened at a low-peak time when the water wasn't really being used, so there wasn't really anything pulled out of the plant. It's my understanding that a computer lost some data and it wasn't discovered immediately. And that's, again, like the mayor said, that needs to be coming from the CCU to be factual.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Rick? Okay. Not seeing any. Thank you, Rick. Next, we're going to hear from our human resource manager, Dana Walden. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor, Man, and Council. Wanted to have the opportunity this evening to discuss the job description review. We are constantly in the process of reviewing job descriptions to make sure that we have efficiency of operation. And there is a role that the council plays, so we wanted to kind of let you be aware of what goes forward and where you will see it on an agenda. This evening, you have some job descriptions for review that are on the consent agenda for your approval. We wanted you to understand the difference as to why we would have them on the consent agenda versus the agenda itself. Because you will see both situations potentially in the future. What happens is that, as you're aware, the council is required to review and approve any change to a job description. So that means as simple as if we were looking at our job descriptions and we found grammatical errors, then we would change those and they would be for your review and approval. So when you receive something, as you're aware, when it's on your packet, if you look at those job descriptions, we're always going to redline those out. So you can see what changes were made. The ones this evening are two job descriptions within the police department. You'll see that what happened was that the chief and the appropriate individuals within the police department reviewed that to ensure that the job descriptions were in line with what was actually being done in that department, that the supervisory level was appropriate. If something in that manner changed. And you'll see, if we have a change in staff, we will always be reviewing those job descriptions before we bring someone on. Because we have them sign and make sure that we have ADA things in place if needed for job descriptions. So it's just a really good time for us to review that. You're going to see some other job descriptions coming your way, particularly in the finance department. They're going to come forward within probably the next couple meetings that you have. And that's because Daniella has been here for a period of time now. She's been able to review what she would like to see the department look like. She's looked at the skill set of the staff that we have. She's looked at the way that things should flow. We've had a change in our auditors. When we move to the new city building, it could be that because of placement of staff, we might have to change something at that point. So we want you to be aware that what's happened is the appropriate department head and staff, the HR department, we've all looked at those. And we're coming to you and saying, this is how we feel that we should staff the departments that we have and supervise the staff. So that's why you see it on the consent agenda, because at that point, we're asking for you to review that and approve it. If it's on an agenda, that's going to be some point in the future, potentially, we have, we're suggesting a new position altogether. Or it's a completely dramatic change in what the job description would look like. And at that point, we would think that there would be a need for discussion, then it would be on an agenda. So I want to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions for Dana?
Okay. So expect to see more in the future.
Thank you. All right, and that is it for staff reports and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Gary?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And Jim?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to unfinished business, item A, which is consider the proposed ordinance amending sections 5-102, 5-105, 5-203, and 5-207, and repealing sections of 5-204 and 5-205 of the municipal code of the City of Park City relating to the issuances of licensers for solicitors, care ambassadors, peddlers, and transient or itinerant merchants or vendors, and repealing the originals of said amended sections. Doug?
Mayor and council, we discussed the vast majority of this ordinance last week and I apologize for having not noticed in advance, but at my copy of the agenda, I'm missing a page. And I don't know if you are or not, but it's really just a page of a, well, it's a page of quite a few changes to 5-203. And I apologize, it's not in your packet. But we talked about that last week and the real change, the reason to bring it back this week was a couple of council members expressed some concern about how we handled exemption from the requirement for a license for charitable organizations. And that change should be on the first page of your ordinance in section 5-105. As that exists today, there's a subsection A is an exemption for farmers. I made a few changes in that that are really not substantive, just kind of cleaned it up. So farmers who grow, who sell products that are grown in Kansas will not have to obtain a license as a street merchant or itinerant merchant or transit merchant. Subsection B is where I tried to take care of the concerns the council had about charitable organizations, outfits like the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the baseball leagues. That initially was pretty restrictive because it required you to be a 501(c)(3). I think, I got the sense last week that the council felt that was a little too restrictive, that there might be some organizations, particularly in town, that would deserve exemption that wouldn't fit that. So I've broadened it. And it reads now the way it does in that red text. "Any nonprofit charitable organization shall be exempt from the licensing requirements of this chapter." That's pretty broad. The next section, however, gives you a little bit of leeway both ways there. It just says, "In the event there's a question whether an organization is entitled to exemption, the governing body shall make the determination." I think clearly anybody that's a 501(c)(3) they're in. Again, the only caveat here, I think this works fine for you. The only caveat is we have to be careful because if we treat a local organization one way and we happen to get somebody else that just looks just like them come in from somewhere else, we pretty much have to treat them the same way if you make a determination. If you were satisfied with the changes we made last week, then this is the one to think about. And I think this answers the questions. I find it workable and I think staff will be able to work with it.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah, I looked at this and I concur. It looks like it takes care of any eventuality that we would have and I'm pleased with the wording.
Does anybody else have any comments? Okay. Gary?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes to the ordinance stated in 5-102, 5-105, 5-203, and 5-207, and repealing sections 5-204 and 205 of the municipal code of the City of Park City, Kansas.
Okay. Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder.
George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Jill Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes seven zero.
That is ordinance 1025-2017.
Thank you, Daniella. That will bring us to new business, item A, which is consider a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, series 2017-1 of the City of Park City, Kansas. And John Haas is here this evening.
Good evening, everyone. John Haas with Ranson Financial Consultants. And maybe the next time I see you, you'll be in the new building. Let's see. One of the things that we want to make the city aware, and I've already talked to Jeff and Daniella about it, is that we're changing our name. We're adding a person and we're going to change from Ranson Financial Consultants to Ranson Financial Group. So if there is anything else, say the same. If you have any questions about that, please let me know. But anyway, first page that we have here of our handout is we're talking about doing the temporary financing for improvements for the Village Estates project and the Saddle Brook project. In bold are the temporary note totals. City will be issuing temporary notes equal to $886,000. We have the estimated construction subtotal and cost of issuance. You'll see that the total estimated cost is about $971,000, so we would allow for charges for the permanent financing with that. We assume that these notes will be outstanding for approximately two and a half years. My estimated interest rate is one and a quarter. I still think I'm pretty good. It's beginning to give a little pressure with that, with the 1% underwriters discount. Table two is the calendar. Tonight, you're simply passing a resolution calling for the sale of temporary notes this evening. June 27th is when bids will be due. I'm actually going to be watching baseball in Detroit that night. So my new partner, Larry Kleeman, who's been in front of this council before, will be here handling selling notes. And he's been around about a half as long as I have, but I've been around for 40 years. And funds will be delivered on July 12th. Any questions that the mayor, the council, or staff would have at this point in time?
George?
Do these need to be lumped together? I have supported one of these and I will vote against the other. So if you want to go together, I'll just vote against the whole thing.
Petitions have been submitted, I understand, and been accepted. So Mr. Capps, you may have voted against the acceptance of that petition at that point in time. The resolution is done under one to save funds of the city in the special assessment project. You would have to make a motion, I think, to segregate the two projects and request a separate vote if you decided to. And then if both projects were accepted, then we'd go back to the single resolution. If one was denied and one was not, then we would amend the resolution tonight. But I would suggest if that's happened, we probably would want to delay and come back at the next meeting.
So.
I'll speak for the city attorney, but that would be.
It's not much of a choice.
I think we should vote on the resolution, up or down. We have a schedule for this bond issue and I don't think that we should try to split it up.
Okay. Well, so just the other part of that is the increased fees for splitting that. Right.
Well, if we did it as two separate temporary note issues, then the cost would be more expensive. There's some flat costs that have to be accepted. How much that is at this point, I don't know. Again, if you decide to go with one project or another, then I think we need to bring that back to the next meeting if you decide not to do one of the projects. So I guess, as the city attorney stated, if you decide that you want to delete one of the projects from the resolution, then you probably should vote against the resolution and bring back a new one at your next meeting. Is that?
Well, what we have is an agenda with a resolution on it. And I don't think it's appropriate for us to vote tonight on something different than what's in front of us. If you want to do something different, we need to come back. But I don't think we vote, so the consequence of that, I think, would be slippage of time. I don't know how critical that is and some additional costs. So tonight, it's either this resolution up or down.
Okay.
Well, could I ask, excellent? The thing is, is I support the one project and I've consistently voted against the other one because I don't support it for, I think, in my mind, good reason. But can I just simply abstain on this to keep from?
You could do that, but then your extension would count as an affirmative vote.
I understand, but I've consistently voted against that one and if I vote aye on this, then.
I don't blame you and I think that's totally appropriate. And I think the other part is you've had the opportunity with, when it comes up, that you've made it really clear what your position is. So I think that's probably a good solution to abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Tom?
We have two developers here that want to build out the existing lots in two different organizations or two different areas and have come to us and asked us to do this. Economies of scale say that the size of the projects that they're doing are probably the right size. So I'm going to make a motion when we approve this resolution.
Jim? I'd second that.
Jack, do you have a comment?
My only comment is that we already have incurred engineering fees and things. My only comment is that we already have incurred engineering fees and things.
Well, I think we have that process already fixed. It's either up or down, and I think George has a solution.
If it's down, then we'll have to come up with city cash to pay the engineering fees.
Right.
That's all I wanted you to know, so.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm not seeing any further discussion. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Linder, George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Epstein.
Joel, Joel Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that passes six zero one?
That is resolution nine six three dash two thousand seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Haas.
Thank you again very much, everyone.
That brings us to our next item on the agenda, item B, which is consider bids for paving improvements to the Saddle Brook addition. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure glad you passed that resolution, or this wouldn't need to be done. If you look in your packet, there is a spreadsheet. We had three bidders for the paving. It was APAC of Kansas, Kansas Paving and Keneho, and this is for Saddle Brook Third Edition Phase Five. The low bidder was Kansas Paving for eighty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. It was a pretty close bid between APAC and Kansas Paving, within maybe a little over ten thousand dollars. So that's pretty close on almost a hundred thousand dollar project. So we would recommend that you go with the lowest bidder of Kansas Paving.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or in motion? Jim?
I would recommend that we accept the lowest bid from Kansas Paving for eighty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the paving improvements to Saddle Brook addition to be funded by future temporary note proceeds.
George?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes six one. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, item C, which is consider bids for the phone system for the new administration center. Jack passed out to everybody a summary of the bids. It should be in front of you. So Jack?
This is going to take a little bit of explanation. None of the bidders offer USB recording. None of the bidders, well, the lowest bidder on the spreadsheet was Great Plains, but most of the items that was in the specification, they can't provide. After looking at the bids, we had already got a quote from Cox for internet service of two sixty-two ninety-four per month. What they did, they included that into their bid, fifty-nine three twenty-four ninety-two. So if you take the internet out, which none of the others had internet in their bids, Cox is the cheapest bid at forty-nine thousand eight fifty-nine oh eight, and staff recommends that we accept their bid.
Did you have any more detail you want to go over on what was not offered? Was there any, anything that you feel like it's horrible that we can't live without?
Well, the only thing I know is the USB recording, and none of them are offering that. So if one was offering it and the others weren't, maybe that was, would be an issue. I know the police department does record their stuff, and I don't know if they have other means like they do now of taking care of that. So, but none of these provide that service.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Jack? And everybody understands the internet part mean that's added to that bid?
The only one positive thing, another positive thing about Cox, they do include desktop presence. So the women at the front, because the building, we're all spread out, they can tell if you're in your office or not. So that helps them from running back and forth and looking for people.
So there is an additional feature that's nice, that's included in the cost package?
Yeah, she just pointed that out, yeah.
Okay, all right. George, I see you pushing it even though it's not working, so.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the bid for Cox for the phone system for the administrative center. I believe that cost is, what, fifty-nine thousand three twenty-four ninety-two?
Actually, it's forty-nine thousand...
Forty-nine thousand eight fifty-nine oh six.
Oh eight.
Oh eight.
All right, Joel?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that item passes seven zero. Item D, we removed, so we'll move on to item E, which is consider completing a grant application available from the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Association for Planning Walkable Places Programs. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, when they complete their, what they call their tip, which is what our projects were involved in on Fifty-third, there's money oftentimes left over in the tip from a variety of projects. So they don't like to leave any money on the table because KDOT will take it and give it to somebody else across the state. So they did some study, and one of the things they felt like that they could use the money for, and KDOT was willing to allow them to do it, would be to fund grants for planning activities. And one of the things that I could see that we might be able to use, because we've talked about this before, about sidewalks in our city and stuff, and one of the things is that we could apply for this grant money, be an eighty-twenty grant, again, to have a consultant hard to do a overall city plan for sidewalks, let's set up standards so that we can use for new construction coming in and stuff. So that's the reason why I'm bringing it up to you. You cannot use the money, though, to build the sidewalk. But with the plan in hand, if a grant program comes up, we can use that plan to submit towards a plan to construct it. And those come and go, and I can't tell you if there's one present or not. I know they have sidewalk routes for schools every now and then. So, but I think this would be a good opportunity to get a plan done, an eighty-twenty. And they're thinking, when I talk to them, somewhere it's going to be between ten and thirty thousand dollars for a consultant to do a plan.
And this really is a good idea on how we can connect all of our current walking paths. And while we're on this subject, I think it's a good thing to bring up because I've had some people really kind of upset that the Fifty-third Street project includes sidewalks on it, yet nobody lives over there that can use those, and they don't understand why we don't have something on hydraulic that's really tied in to the rest of the community. And we've looked at hydraulic before, when we did the short jaunt from Sixty-first Street over to City Hall, and that, the major part of that is with the ditches there, the great expense that comes into trying to figure out how we lay a sidewalk over there. But when we do a street project like Fifty-third, the sidewalk is included within that, and we're getting partnering money to get that stuff put in where we're not paying for some of those costs. Another question that's come up is why that sidewalk on Fifty-third Street ends and doesn't finish going to heights. And that's because the Wichita Public School System did not want to pay. It would have been a similar thing in the eighty-twenty, where they could have paid twenty percent to connect that the rest of the way, and then it would have been funded for the other eighty percent, but they didn't want to pay the twenty percent to connect that. So that's why that sidewalk ends there. I know I've had several phone calls over that, and I've really gotten a lot of complaints lately about, you know, hydraulic. This is one thing that would be good for us, and if we ever get into another project where we're doing something, we can really tie everything together. I think probably everybody's seen it over the past few days where the weather's been nice. Everybody's out using the current walking paths, and everybody's out being active and using those. And we do want to figure out a way, how can we start tying those things in together? And if we have a solid plan in place, and we have somebody professional that's putting that together, we might find a couple of things that they see where we could tie something in together at a minimal cost, just to connect something up that we haven't seen before. So I really commend Jack on bringing this to us because I think this is what we need. We need this plan in our back pocket and how we can continue to connect the community together through the sidewalks.
George?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea as well. We have a lot of sidewalks that seem to end with no connection, and I've seen a lot more people out walking in the summertime, especially across the street of the park. So if we could interchange those with some outlying areas that we can can mend or make as far as a path or something that people can actually walk on and tie them in citywide, I think that's a great idea. I'm all in support of this.
Okay, Tom?
I was going to say, this goes a little bit bigger than just sidewalks. It goes to pop-up, what they call pop-up parks and some other things. It could be for planning for an event, or events that you're using in the core part of the city to move people to and from it. It's really an opportunity for bigger than sidewalks, but we need to work off the sidewalk end of it. And that's, if we're going to go do this plan, we need to think about funding them in the, you know, afterwards, too, which was something we've been shortsighted on in the past. Doesn't do any good if we go do a plan again and we don't build no sidewalks, so just want to throw that out there.
If anybody thinks this is a good plan, they want to make a motion, then we go ahead and do it, and I'd appreciate that.
George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve completing the grant application from Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization for Planning Walkable Places Program. I approve that.
I like it as well, and would second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Jack, for being on the ball on that one. Appreciate it. The next item, which is item F, which is consider reappointments to the Board of Health. Currently, myself, Councilman Aldrich, and Councilman Lynn Here serve on that board, and Councilman Capps is the alternate. I know Councilman John Lynn Here isn't here this evening. I spoke to him. He's completely fine with staying on that board. So, Tom?
Make a motion when we approve the recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
I guess I just want to make sure, George, you're still good with being an alternate, and Gary, you're still good with that. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to governing body reports, and we'll start with Councilman Kim.
Memorial Day weekend coming up, so hope everybody's able to get out and enjoy the three-day weekend. Hopefully, the weather will be nice. They go take into some of our parks, and all the things we have to offer, races at Eighty-One Speedway, Jeeps. Anyway, we're at Park City. That's all I have.
Joel? George?
I don't have any.
Tom?
At the TAC WAMPO meeting yesterday, we had quite a bit of discussion on Uber freight apps, and something that's coming out now that Uber's looking at doing is providing a freight app for people that want freight delivered, and they're working it toward, you're in it toward mostly independent truck holders. So they'll be able to go somewhere, pull an app up, find a load, and load a truck up, and move on. So they're running on down the road. And then on the backside of that, we also spent quite a bit of time on drivers' vehicles and the push to make that happen. I don't know how soon it's going to happen, but they're starting to look at how they're going to get vehicles to talk to each other, and even talking about how they're going to get pedestrians so that they have some kind of a, either their cellphone or something like that that tracks them so the partner or truck knows that they're there walking. So it's coming along. It's not too far down the road. The big brother have us all hooked up, so just throw that out there. Something you might want to pay attention to in the news because it's happening pretty quick.
Just, I want to bring up real quick, that last meeting, I had something I wanted to bring up in this one. Remembered about a week later what that was. And that was really just to, for everybody to recognize the boards that they're currently on, serving as liaisons on. And I think what we'll do is we'll wait until November, and we'll look at that again, see if we want to make any changes or do that. But I think it's a good time, too, to recognize those people that are on those. And, you know, we currently just went over who's serving on the Board of Public Health, and then Councilman Jones and Melvin Kerr and myself, and then Councilman Capps, also worked with CCUA, and then George Glover, big proponent of parks, making sure Fish and Derby happens. That's a huge thing. Gary and George have both been very active in planning commission meetings over the years, and that always takes additional time. Tom spends a lot of time with WAMPO and many different aspects in the city and convention and tourism. So we really appreciate that. And then Joel, also active member with the parks, coming from the park board. So just, I want to thank all the council members that do things outside of these meetings that takes a lot of time from your schedules that you're giving back to your community. Tom?
I had one comment I wanted to make after the last meeting. We elected a new council president. Typically, that's happened the month after the elections. So since the council will take effect with a new council in the January first meeting, we ought to be looking at that president probably being elected in February, and maybe then that ties in with what you're talking about, appointments, too.
Yeah, I really want to start looking at some of that, and, you know, the liaisons we've always done in May, too, as well. And I'd really like to kind of break that up because I really think for somebody new coming in, dumping on them the next month all these appointments is probably not very fair, and needs to be shuffled down a little bit to get your feet.
Melvin?
Just piggyback what Jim was saying there. I think eighty-one Speedway's racing Saturday and Sunday night this week, so a couple of big races there, so that's all I have.
Gary? George?
Yeah, like I said, it's starting to warm up. The Fish and Derby's coming up. Everybody get their rods and reels out and get ready for that. We're, again, it's June seventeenth from nine to eleven at Chisholm Point Pond on North Grove. You'll see the cars. We put the signs out the morning of the Derby, and we're excited. It's free. It's for everyone. We look at age groups from zero to a hundred, so we don't exclude anyone, male or female. So come out and enjoy the Derby. Thank you.
Okay. Gary?
Make motion to adjourn.
George?
Second that.
Okay, we got a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes seven zero.